This proclamation, whereas October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four pays tribute to all first responders, including firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, nine one one operators, and other emergency personnel. Whereas first responders are the individuals who run toward a crisis, selflessly putting their lives on the line to protect and serve during often dangerous situations. Whereas our brave first responders sacrifice and answer the call of duty for our community and are ready to help no matter the emergent circumstance around the clock. Whereas it is important to call attention to, as well as essential to recognize and honor their commitment, sacrifices, hard work, and unwavering dedication to the city of Linden. Now therefore, I Danielle N. Kusan, Mayor of the City of Linden, do hereby declare Monday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, as National First Responders' Day, and ask everyone to express gratitude and appreciation to our first responders today and every day on behalf of the City of Linden and the Linden City Council. And the first responders also do include the DPW workers who are often called in. Just wanted to let people know that we recognize the importance that they have in the community. So thank you to all of our first responders. We also had, the council had received a letter from Joel Pounds that was also part of our correspondence. Wanted to put that out as well. Next on our agenda is public comment. Any person wishing to address the city council during a meeting will get three minutes under public comment. When public comment is approached on the agenda, individuals wishing to speak will be called upon utilizing the filled-out comment forms. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer. It is not a time for debate, but for questions or comments for council and or staff. Questions will be answered if the information is readily available. If answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within forty-eight hours and respond to the questions within ten days or when the information becomes available. And I just wanted to say that I did see a post this morning about the library, and I know looking at the cards, there are a lot of people that want to address that. Unfortunately, some misinformation was shared that we were getting rid of the library, that we were selling the mill, and that we were not working with the director from the Genesee District Library. People were encouraged to call the director. I did speak with our city manager earlier, who has been in communication with the Genesee District Library throughout the process of us going forward with the renovation. And he has continued to express appreciation for the communication with the city and also the fact that we are working on offering some kind of services during the renovation. We don't know what that's going to look like yet, but we want to be able to offer some services to our residents because we understand and appreciate the importance of the library has to the community. I appreciate our young residents being up here, and it is important. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. We also reach out to our library board. At the current time, we do not have a council representative on the library board. I know that Ellen Glass did attend their last meeting because I think it's important that we continue to see what services can be offered to the residents of Linden during the renovation process. But also, just wanted to put that out there. I know it's, I received a lot of content on it this morning and wanted to address it ahead of time in case that's part of what people are here for, and I'm guessing that's a decent number of people. So again, three minutes, Ms. How will time people? Carl Doolin, you can come forward.
I'm Carl Doolin. I live on Saddleburg Drive, and I'm representing the Historical Society as their treasurer. I just wanted to know when we could pick up the check for twenty-two thousand sixty-two dollars. It was approved by the board on their October fifteenth meeting. And should I call the treasurer tomorrow, maybe to settle an appointment? And we can use the money for moving the store, so we really could use that money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Monica Lerner.
I'm Monica Lerner. I live at one five two West Ralston Road, and this is a continuation from the last time I ran out of time. So I've had four instances of trespass in the past couple of months that had had police involvement. Each time, the officer doesn't seem to know how to handle it, saying that all they can do is warn the people. The latest was the putting up of signs by Mr. Colbert without my permission, which constitutes trespass. It's not ethical either. Michigan law also prohibits trespassing on private property, which includes entering or remaining on property without the owner's consent. None of these people have had my consent. And I have a question of why ordinances can be ignored and going back to the political signs that were put up early. I see on the police report that there were eight complaints before the date that the signage was supposed to be put up. There's a big safety issue with the bike path on North Bridge, especially being blocked by Amazon trucks and other delivery trucks. The bikes and cars have to go around these vehicles, and I believe it's an accident waiting to happen. East Ralston Road and Ripley Road have safety issues as well with speeders. And I know this has been addressed multiple times, but we don't seem to get any closer to having these things taken in hand. The police report shows that there were seventy-six warnings. That seems like a lot, and that seems to be about the number every month. So if warnings aren't working, then we need to, you know, if people are just going to count on warnings, you know, maybe we can do better on, you know, getting, helping with that speeding problem. And I would like to know kind of why the mayor is against renters and landlords. And the last is there's still misinformation targeting my property on the mayor's website.
What?
Thank you, Ms. Lerner. Next, Monica Steele. I'm sorry, Monique Steele.
Hi, I'm Monique Steele. I live at four five Aldrich Street, and I just have concern about what our plan is with regards to the library as well as the museum. It has been in place for a long time. It works.
Sorry, can you reset that?
Can I reset it? I'm sorry.
Do you want me to do that?
No, it's okay. I'm sorry. That finger did.
Okay.
The library and the mill are both fundamental to our community and what we are as a small community. I think that we just need to have a plan before we ask them to move out. The building was given money to help renovate it from the state, which is our tax dollars, and I'm wondering if the money was given to renovate a historical building or if that money was given for the library and the museum purposes. And I think it's just important that the community actually knows what the plan is in an informed way. And if you need help or you're looking for volunteers to talk about how to, you know, come up with ways or what we can do in the interim, you should ask the community for their involvement.
Thank you. Scott Ward.
My name is Scott Ward, six oh two Silver Lake Court, Linden. Sounds like you're already on the thinking about the library, but I'd like to put my two cents in. Actually, the library is the hub of the town, I think. It's kind of the unsung Carol. I happened to go over to the Fenton Library today to get my mother, my ninety-two-year-old mother a book shut in today. And I was looking at their library, and I know Fenton's a bigger town, they have more of a tax base, they got more businesses, but Fenton embraces their library. They had a story hour going on, the computers were full, the parking lot was full. Fenton takes care of their library. They embrace it. It's their golden part of the town. And they're not afraid to put some money and effort and mow the lawn and wash the windows and be part of it. My feeling is that, of course, as you know, we need a library. I'd like to see it in town where at the mill, hopefully, where they can maybe after they go to Dr. Wax, they could go to the library, or they could go to the garage and go to the library. And we're fortunate enough to have the Genesee District Library. They do a great job. They would staff it, they bring the books in. That's the hard part. We just have to find a place, a home for them. And when you think about it, maybe the dollars don't have to make sense. Maybe it doesn't have to be balanced. Maybe our tax dollar work can embrace the library. I'm sure the dollars have to come close, but it doesn't have to be, in my opinion, totally balanced. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Scott. Greg Jones.
Hello, I'm Greg Jones with Sunset Quarles, the fish store here in town.
Hey Greg, I would keep going back and hear.
Is that better? I'm with Sunset Quarles, fish store in town. I just wanted to bring up really fast, for Halloween, we are putting on another classic card show, but it's also going to be a trick-or-treat event. And I know there's some places in town where they, with their discharge and stuff, they may not be able, people may not be able to pass out candy or, and I just wanted to offer the opportunity, anyone's more than welcome to come to it on Halloween and pass out candy. No problem at all if you don't want to decorate your vehicle or whatever, that's perfectly fine, just put a table or whatever. So I just wanted to throw it out there for everybody, and you're all, you're all more than welcome.
Thank you. Susan Malenrich.
Hi, Susan Malenrich, one five oh nine eight Holman Road, mine's the library and the museum. We moved here fifty-one years ago, but prior to forty, fifty-three years ago, we drove through Linden and we saw the mill. And that was one of our deciding factors to move from Detroit to here. And there's only fourteen left mills left in Michigan. And when you buy a house, you don't sell your house first and then go looking for a house. You have already found a house that you want. So our library has been here. It was in the village. And at that time, on the mill, there were five hundred and fifty residents, and we were able to maintain the library. Now, we're a city that's supposed to be better, and we can't maintain it. Here's a problem. So I'd like to address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Miller.
Denise Miller, I two two Tidner. I'm coming for a real, real quick, I'm going to talk to the DPW. Great job in everything you're doing in the city. I see your people out and they're doing amazing jobs, and they're cleaning our roads. Good job.
Thank you.
My issue with rumor mill this morning, I think everyone's seen on site about things that aren't happening and where to call and talk to Mr. Dave at the library. I did make that phone call. I, before I'm posting out, I'm making sure if everything's true, which is a good thing. But I think the problem with the rumor mill is that the people in Linden are not knowing what is going on. It started in, I think, twenty-two. And little by little, we're looking at the time going, and in December of twenty-five, we're done. And I know we're having progress down below the mill. It's what's going to happen altogether. I've had people say, you know, they've been told that this is going to happen, and this is going to happen, and people are educating us what is going to happen. We need to know exactly. It's been enough time now. They have a plan, just some kind of plan, because if you have a plan, you can stop the rumors. I know where I stood. I've watched little tiny feet this size go into the library, and they're learning and they're getting educated when they're out of school, after school, in the summer. I've watched people, I'm sorry, sir, his age, go in there. They can't afford internet. And this is where they can go to get what's going on in our world, because they might not even have internet or the dish or anything. So they go, I actually seen somebody today, and I talked to him, and he said if the internet's gone, part of his world is gone. Because he wants, he needs to find things out, what's going on right now, especially in the city. So I, I hope that pretty soon, we don't have no more rumors, and we get to see what's going to happen to this, because our historical, our library, the building itself, everyone says this is our gem, this is our heart of Linden, and I totally agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Ross.
Peter Ross, president of the Linden Mills Historical Society and Museum. We would like to give you a brief progress report on the Linden Museum. After being told to vacate the building, the Historical Society has made a small dedicated group of volunteers who worked many hours, ramping, packing, boxing, moving, and storing the thousands of artifacts, documents, priceless furniture, and other historic pieces of Linden's past into a climate-controlled facility. But we are not finished yet. We are now moving toward a point where decisions have to be made regarding the museum. Do we remove everything which will include the lighting, window shutters, iron wood walls, two floors of hardwood flooring, a large built-in military cabinet, and many, many other little things that we have provided over the years for the museum? We have been led to believe, according to some city officials, we will be coming back, but others have told us to go find another place. And according to the latest article in the Tri-County Times, city officials don't know what uses will operate on the Linden mill after the renovation. Records indicate that when the building was sold at the time, at the time to the Village of Linden, part of the consideration of this transaction was that the mill be used as a cultural center to include a library. The library moved into the mill in the early nineteen-sixties, and the museum followed decade later in nineteen seventy-five. The years following, Linden continued to be a small but thriving and friendly community. We still do not understand how a committee of four people, all city officials, can make decisions without any input from any of the citizens on a matter such as something which represents a very fiber of this community. Is this the legacy you wish to leave in this community? We will be depriving our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and the many future generations to learn of the culture and history of this wonderful city. Arguments have been made regarding the fact that we do not pay rent, that we need, be reminded, most libraries and museums do not pay rent. We provide a service to the community, not much different than any other volunteer organization provides a service. Please allow the museum back into the historic mill. We have no place to go. For the benefit of all, we want very much to work with the city and be on good terms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. I don't have any other cards. I just wanted to check with the staff. I know a lot of times when Ellen is here, she's feeling some of the things are responding. Was there anything from the staff that you wanted to respond to, or will we just have responses back to people based on the cards they filled out? Responses back? Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which does include the city council's special meeting minutes from October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-four, or resolution directing annual notice publication for removal of uncontained trash, and resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-four, resolution establishing the regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have no unfinished business today. We have no new business listed. Our manager did provide some update, but I know, Don, if you could just, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, the Lindwood was addressed. I know that was part of the update, and I know it's been a concern with some people. It was mentioned today because of trick-or-treating, kind of where we are with that.
Sure. So we're going to be working with the residents in there to help identify what the safest route is possible for trick-or-treaters to approach each individual property. We have, we're going to be demarking, basically, we're going to have the residents put up green glow sticks in the area that they think is appropriate for trick-or-treaters to approach their house. So we will be working with the residents in the next couple of days here to make sure that they get the supplies that they need. We're also going to put a public notification out to encourage residents to turn on as many exterior lights as possible so that we can illuminate the area to the greatest extent available. And then we're encouraging trick-or-treaters, again, to approach. It's hard for anxious kids, we get that, but we're hoping that they'll approach in the designated areas that the residents have identified. We're encouraging parents and trick-or-treaters to carry flashlights in those areas just so that they can, you know, maybe see any barrels and construction fence and those sorts of things while they're out there. We're also encouraging people to, again, stay away from construction equipment and supplies when they're in their area. It isn't active construction zone that's going to be out there for the next few weeks at a minute and probably in the next spring. So we're just going to try to do what we can to encourage the kids to stay safe while they're, be careful and stay safe in that area.
All right. Thank you. And next on our agenda is the city attorney's report.
The only thing I have to mention tonight is a ethics complaint was made, was lodged against Pam Howd. That's been given to me for investigation, and I will be submitting a summary and a recommendation shortly.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we do have the department reports. There's a report from the treasurer's department, the police department, code enforcement report, the DPW report, as well as the fire department report. And Kristen, if you could go to the DPW report, there were some pictures from the mill, the council, like what the old council chambers looks like. I know Mr. Glass brought up what needs to be removed, and obviously, that's something the staff can address, but for anyone who's been in the council, the top two pictures that are shown there are what council chambers looks like now, which clearly is a lot different than what we are all used to seeing. So that's why it's necessary that things have been removed. Anything else to comment on that, Don?
No, it's referred to as exploratory demolition. And one thing that we did learn in the process is we do not, we did not have accurate plans for the mill. So the architect is in the process of measuring both with, you know, old-school tapes, and then there's the laser technology nowadays, which they're able to utilize. And so in order for the laser to appropriately measure the interior of the building, they had to take out the ceilings to accomplish that. So that's what you see there. In addition, the floor that, what we would consider the base floor or the basement floor there is actually elevated above the original floor that was part of the mill. So they are going to be cutting out that concrete and examining the posts that run down to the foundation just to make sure, again, that all of those things are stable and are in good condition before the reconstruction takes place. So all this stuff, you know, there's not a lot to see outside. There's a lot going on, but these things are all necessary in order to make sure we're making a wise investment and that the building is stable and going to last, again, for the next few hundred years.
Thank you. Did anyone in council have questions on the department reports?
I have a question on the, on your police report, Scott. Could, Kristen, could you go to that page, please? Oh, is that it? Okay, it's the one before that that talks about the, there you go. Now, Scott, that's your report, isn't it? Or is that code enforcement?
That's code enforcement. It's ours.
Okay. So I believe what those sign says is that they removed signs, political signs, there's eight of them, from property right aways. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just to be clarifying that, I want to make sure that that's what you were saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our council comments and reports. Brad, I'll start with you.
On Thursday, I'll be joining the Genesee County Steering Committee for the new Genesee County Master Plan update for twenty twenty-five, by long-range transportation and the whole new master plan to a county, so nice suggestions. If you want to be going countywide, let me know.
Thank you. Pam?
So first, I want to apologize for missing last week's meeting, but I was in the hospital. And I just want to let everybody know that if you get a hornet sting, take it very, very seriously. And I didn't have a reaction to venom, but I sure had a reaction against the stingers that were in my hand, two of them. They cause a severe infection, and I now have six weeks of intravenous antibiotic treatment every morning at seven. And two, to address the attorney's report, I fully believe I will be exonerated. I believe in the Michigan.gov court system, which is a true, and the Lapeer County Court System webpage, which are true. They're published, they're out there for the public. And my neighbors and friends will also speak for me according to those webpages and what was said to them. And the third thing, Webster defines slander as a false tale or report maliciously altered, intending to injure the reputation of another by lessening their esteem. A false tale. Michigan.gov is not false. It's a reality.
Thank you, Pam. Ray?
We did have a Sunday afternoon rec meeting and conducted a lot of reports on programs, approved our budget for next year, and talked a lot about the pathways and the progress on the pathway. We also have been contacted by the schools to start planning for Box City for next year. And because of the construction, the tours and the library and museum probably will not occur, and Ellen has taken the lead on that. I've agreed to help her, and we'll report out on what we find. Thank you, Madam Mary.
Thank you. Brenda?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. Well, I had a couple of people approach me or talk to me about the intersection down here, the right-hand turn lane coming southbound on North Bridge and turning to the right. The, there isn't a right-hand turn lane there, and I've done this myself like them, in the correct lane, and people come up on the right-hand side into that parking space and turn, even though everyone's waiting with their blinkers on. So I don't know what could be done there. I know it used to be a turn lane years ago, but I think we changed that and moved having a couple more parking spots there. But, but that's- But that's something I've noticed myself, and a few people brought that up to me, so I wanted to bring that up to council so we could take a look at that. Also, the markings on the road coming up from the south, on South Bridge Street, and you come into that intersection on Bridge and Broad, the markings, there's a couple of people, and I've been victim of it myself, but from the beginning, not being able to tell where the lane is because the markings are at the intersection, the turn arrows are right at the intersection, and we might want to put two there, two in the left-hand turn, two in the through there, and then, you know, maybe the right-hand turn lane, just to make things a little less confusing. But those are the only comments I had tonight.
Thank you. So I wanted to address some things. I did, I do agree, Monica Larder mentioned the speeding. On some roads, it is, it's bad. East Ralston, I don't, they're, I don't know how fast they're going, but it's pretty fast. Brooklyn is pretty fast. And I know it happens everywhere. Unfortunately, I know where I am in the city, I'm at the far end to the west, and because the speed limit changes after the city limits, after my street, people are really accelerating. So I know we've had the temporary, you know, it rotates, and I think it helps things for a little bit, but just, I don't want to see something happen to someone, but.
May I address that?
Yes, go ahead.
So with those speed signs, for instance, East Ralston, we found, we kept it out there, oh gosh, almost a month at a time, and the speed limit was under, I mean, on average, it was way under. It was thirty-five there, and I think it was like twenty-nine, the average. I mean, there's a lot of perception. Now, there's occasionally a car going, yeah, speeding. But everywhere we put the speed signs, the average was either below, at, or maybe a little above the posted speed limit. And again, so one of the things that they look at is the percentile, how cars are driving, et cetera. You might want to look at the speed changes in those areas as well. Maybe our speed limits are, you know, potentially too old.
Thank you. I also wanted to, there were some remarks about the mill. The four members of the advisory committee, we have not met on anything for that since, I think the last thing was the interviews that were done, and then council, it was the council as a whole that approved the contract for the architect. We were hoping to have something from the architect to have now. I know when I talked to Ellen today that they had hoped to have something by now to present, but as Don explained, there were some unforeseen things that they found. We have been working on trying to get, the staff's been working on trying to put together some kind of a timeline to share that information. Unfortunately, quite honestly, attention due to some things not, on behalf of the city, people got diverted on other things that had to be addressed. That will be, you know, continues to go together, and hopefully we'll have something from the architect soon so we can share more information with the public. We had the Zombie Scarecrows and Monsters event. Brad's like a poster child for it right now because he's got the Halloween shirt on, but it was a great event. I know Friday was a busy night. I was there Saturday helping to pass out candy at the beginning of the trail. And then my daughter and a friend were scarers, and it was, it was just great to see so many people out. They had great weather, the people getting so excited, the kids, and kids of all ages being excited for it. Great group. I know it's a ton of work. Larry puts together this phenomenal world back there. But thank you, and happening in Linden, a great time, and so many people really enjoyed it. And it's, it's that type of thing that, it's good to see us coming together as a community. Last week, I attended Shelley Day's retirement party. She has worked for the Chamber for thirty-two years, and she has done a great job with bringing the community together. And there was a time where Linden and Fenton did not work together. We were kind of like, I think, almost pitted against each other. Not really. I think part of it was, we had a city manager who had come from there, and people didn't want to be compared. We don't, I don't want us to become Fenton because we are different and unique in our own way, but we work together, and Shelley Day has been one of those people who was instrumental in bringing the communities together. She will be missed, but the Chamber is strong, and they will continue to do well. It was very nice. It was a well-attended event for Shelley and all that she's done for the community. Friday night was the Thompson Road Regional Dog Park Bowling Fundraiser, which, I was at, if he's still here. That was a fun event. Again, always good to have these other things going on. We have, Dr. Wax does Lace Up for Learning. That is this Saturday. And what she does for that is people can decide which school they want funds to go to, and then they see which school raises the most money. So when you register, you pick a school that's designated, and then funds go to the schools. So there is still a chance to register for that. They do it over at the county park and run through the trail by the county park, and then she has some of the different businesses that are there at the beginning. It's always a beautiful time going through and seeing the colors for it, but still, still a chance. And even if you don't have a kid in the school district, you can pick one school to donate the funds to. So this year, it's my cousin's daughter who's in middle school. I said, that's the one I chose when I registered. Finally, the, we have boards and commission applications. It is in December, we vote on the appointments for boards and commissions for the following year, and those boards and commissions rotate. There is an application online, and I know I try to encourage people, so this is another push, people who have something to say, you want to be involved. This is the real way that you can make a difference, being involved in one of these boards. So fill out the applications. Those applications are gone through, and then recommendations are made. One of the things that I had mentioned in the past is that maybe we need to do an arts and culture committee. And I think it's something that we should continue to discuss maybe at the next meeting, especially. So we have the library board, but I think it's more than that. I know that Fenton has an arts and culture committee, and they have been able to bring great things to the community. And it's something that we could consider. I also think that that could help in working with the museum. But again, I encourage people to fill out those applications if you would like to get further involved with the city. Next on our agenda are the financial reports. Were there any questions on the bills?
No.
All right. Hearing and seeing no questions. I did not, is the seven thirty-nine our total for, okay. So the total bills are seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Support.
And Kristen, quit a roll call, please.
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Over?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have no closed session. We are adjourned. I don't know if there are any students in here who are trying to get credit for class. Any one of us can sign your sheet. So thank you. Have a good evening.